All right, I'm calling this meeting the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, April 20, 2015 at 6:30. First up, I want to mention a couple of changes to the agenda. We have added item nine. The fire chief wants to talk to us about some equipment he wants to order. And Tony Krulikowski is going to give us a follow-up on some investigations he's done into our questions about community appropriations. That's item 18. Does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. Approval of minutes. How many minutes are there?
Twenty.
Minutes for the special meeting on Friday, April 10th. I move we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved, 5:00. Do I have those?
They are, they'd be the second to last. The file starts with March 2nd.
Okay. I just started it. What was at the top of my file? All right, I'll go through this list then. Minutes for Monday, April 6th, regular meeting. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is the minutes for the select board meeting on town meeting night before town meeting. I move we approve. I need Art or Ken to second it.
Second.
Seconded by Art. He needs... Oh, obviously, no, it's Tony or Art that are were there with me. Okay. Sorry, Ken. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Is Ken and Mitch. Minutes for town meeting on March 2nd.
Okay, that was okay.
Same thing.
Town meeting. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Waterboard meeting on Monday, April 6th. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Passes 5:00. Tyler?
Tyler.
Check warrant number 21. In the amount of $32,435.56. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Items over $1,000. $1,200 to wholesale distributors. Do you know what that is, David?
I'll have to look that one up. I'll go buy that one earlier.
All right. Also have a number of charges to William E. Daly at around $2,000 each. $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield. $1,500 to the sheriff. $1,300 to Door Oil. $1,100 to Green Mountain Power. $1,800 to Mountain Air Assessors. $2,300 to Telvent. I know what that is, but I can't remember.
It's the radar system in the garage. It's the last payment.
Okay. We're getting rid of that after today. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrant is approved, 5:00.
You want to work on selling it?
That's really great. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. I have retirement warrant number 21. In the amount of $127.34. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Payroll warrant. Payroll warrant number 21. In the amount of $18,773.15. I move we approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4:00. Ken just stepped out.
Want to put in an abstention?
Just do 4:00. Yeah, abstention is a little more formal than absent. Did I get them all? Ken, we passed a payroll warrant while you were out. We trust you're approving. Are there any announcements?
Yeah, just the Ordinary Heroes Day at the Shasberry Historical Society is going to be May 30th, Saturday, May 30th, and I hope we can...
There's a lot of people attending.
Get that on my calendar. There'll be more coming out about it. Yeah.
Dave, when is greenup day?
Yeah, I was looking that up. Now, we're going to talk about that later, but greenup day is May 2nd. There will be some changes this year. Karen Melanger, who had been running it for a number of years, is not present this year. We're not going to be able to do some of the things that she had done before. We have limited volunteers because the rec committee, assistant two people, so right now we'll have distribution at the places that have been distributed that before.
Bags will be available, and I'll start posting these. I got these from Karen today. We'll start posting where the bags will be available, which includes Ripman's Feed Store, Paulin's, the Clearbrook Farm, Town Office, the Shasberry Landfill. There'll be a list of places where the bags can be left, including some roadside corners where the road department will pick them up afterwards. We are going to continue with... Tam will deliver a small container here for that Saturday. And the rec committee, we're going to try and do something to have someone here that you can pick up bags here for the day and go around, and you can drop the bags back here. We're going to try and break this out a little bit more. We have to change some things again. If anyone's interested in helping out, it'll be on our website tomorrow. You can give me a call, and we can try and arrange some of the things that took place in the past. But again, we're down to virtually one or two volunteers, and we're not going to be able to do some of the things that went on before, like the... What was it? The...
Ladybug rocks.
Ladybug rocks, which I understand there were 60 placed around the town or something like that, and we just won't have the people to do that this year. In fact, I don't have anyone who's willing to do that at the moment. So if we can develop it a little bit more in the short span we have, then we'll take that on. But the bags will be available at the usual locations, and the drop-offs will be at the usual locations, as they have been for the last several years. And everything will be on the website tomorrow.
Well, it's not too late. If somebody wants to, either here or at home, wants to step up and take Karen's place in placing the little ladybug rocks out as incentives for the... To get the kids out picking stuff up and to help coordinate that whole effort, let us know. Are there any public comments?
Yeah.
Tyler Resch, come forward, please.
Just briefly, I was interested in a couple of items on your agenda. I wondered if I could... The road foreman situation, and also I wanted to see about the Coal Spring situation.
Okay. Well, the road foreman situation is that the road... Terry Stacy is no longer employed as road foreman. And as you may have read in the paper, in accordance with a severance agreement that we're hoping that he will agree to, we will not be commenting on his employment, and he will not be commenting on his employment. So there's really not much more to say about Terry. In the meantime, Steve Washburn, our assistant road foreman, will be acting as interim road foreman, and normal crew operations will continue with a five-man crew. Coal Spring is due to come up on the agenda. We're due to sign a work agreement with Angus McCullough, the artist for the project. I have been working to get more grants to move that project forward. The grant we have from Vermont Arts Council allows us to do art design and art fabrication, but not some of the stuff that we need to do first, like legal... Study legal issues and permitting and that sort of thing. So I've been working to apply for more grants. I've kind of hit a wall with a lot of the grants. It's a small wall, but they all require... They all have online applications these days, and they all require... All the ones I've gone to so far require a letter stating our tax-exempt status. Our tax-exempt status is written into statute, but you can't tell that to a web form. So... But there is a way to acquire that, and I have made that process start. Should have that in a couple of weeks. And the project is going forward. Did you have any specific questions?
Did you have plans yet?
No. That's what... The design of the site will be the first item of business that Angus will work on, and that's what the work agreement that we're going to look at tonight addresses. And we'll allow him to use $1,900 to start that work and give us a design... To start working on a design. And if you're interested in helping with the design, we would love to have your input.
Yeah, sure.
Any other public comments? All right, treasurer's report. Melanie Dexter. Welcome.
I've been digging deeper into the numbers than I had at the last meeting. I don't think anything has changed. Nothing substantive has come up to change the picture for the projection to the end of the year. So we're right... We're still on track to finish very slightly ahead of budget. I think that's pretty much what you've been hearing, and it looks like that's still... That nothing has happened to change that.
Okay. So we know we're over budget on highways, but we have other savings that we're anticipating will make that up and keep us a little bit ahead. Great.
And there's still some revenue coming in that, you know, there's a margin of error around everything, but it looks pretty good. Some think we could still have another snowstorm, you know? But right now...
There's snow in the forecast for Wednesday.
Right.
Steve probably knows that.
So, yeah, right now it looks like pretty much what the picture was a couple of weeks ago. It's still looking the same.
Any questions for Melanie? We're... The next task I know is on the horizon at some point is setting the tax rate. I guess that's... We typically do that in August. I was being reminded today.
Yeah.
So just letting you know that I thought of it.
Yeah. I've been hearing rumors about that, yeah.
That should not be hard. That's really just a matter of making sure we have the latest grant list value and the budget number, and that pretty much divides out. All right? Welcome. Thank you.
Good job.
Steve Washburn, welcome. So what's it like out there?
We scraped most of last week. Got some... Made the difference, made it better for people to get around. Unfortunately, we still have some frost that's coming out and making a mess in a few spots, but it doesn't seem to appear to be too bad yet. Doing what we can with it to try to get people around, back and forth to school and work.
Where are the worst spots right now?
Daniel's Road is fairly bad.
Mm-hmm.
There's this spot on Bros Hill. Tinkham Road, actually, it's called by... Actually, the Bro entrance to the farm, it's kind of humped up a little bit there.
Mm-hmm.
Knocked the top of that off yesterday, well, last week, one day, and put a little stone in there to try to get it to bind up a little bit. But it is what it is until it comes out all the way to where we can actually smooth them up really good. But we got as far as Avondale Meadows, getting it smoothed up on the west side, and we made it as far as where the blacktop ends, east road to the Arlington line, all the way up there, and Upper Maple Hill, we got part of that scraped. So it's a lot better than it was two weeks ago.
So what you're doing now is not real grading what...
It's not going to be permanent.
Smoothing it out?
It won't stay until everything dries out enough to where it'll take shape and pack in and stay.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just trying to get them through for now.
Okay.
We did have a couple of calls. I might as well tell you now. On Perron Road, again, late today they called, so...
Okay.
I mean, I drove it on Friday, so I don't know what happened in the interim, so...
But if you could check it again tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And Madison Road, just before it comes on to Bennett Hill or...
Gordon Hill.
Gordon Hill.
Okay.
Underneath the pine trees by Paul Watson's there.
Coming in.
I think it's worth noting, Steve and I just commented before the meeting, that places where they put the fabric last year on Murphy Hill and by Coal Spring, they haven't moved an inch. It's just amazing.
Didn't even have to touch them with the grader.
The difference that it's made, so it works.
It does work, and that's why part of what the crew is watching for now is the places, because we have such a limited budget.
Yeah.
Is trying to pick the places that have the worst cases that need to be addressed right away, because I think we're down to about 2,100 feet of fabric for this next fiscal year, which, you know, isn't very far. So we have to work looking for the worst patches that we have. And a lot of the pothole issues, we address with more aggressive grading and using the scarfire to get the holes out, so...
Also think it's worth noting how we were talking about using two graders in the same area so that the guy with the rake, so it's... We can't send one grader east and another grader west, and the poor guy with the rake has to run in between because of...
Yeah.
How quick you rake it is important and how well it stays. So what we've decided is that the two graders will work together. That way the rake and if any chloride in the future and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, it's definitely... Steve and I talked about it. Definitely saves a lot of time having everything going in one direction and getting them raked and chloride as quick as possible after the grader's done is...
Fortunately, the first time around, we couldn't do it that way, and the phone would ring right off the wall if we didn't do that.
Yeah. Yeah, Steve was saying, and I agree. You know, at this time, it's one pass to get everything kind of back.
Yeah.
But then when we get into the real grading, which we hope to be ongoing from now until the end of the year, you know, one moving all the time to get it to work better, you know?
Tyler.
Can I ask you a question about this new application of extremely coarse gravel? It's almost pebbles on the Madison Road, it's on Coal Spring. It's very hard to drive through, and it tends to washboard itself. Is that going to be done more in the future?
Try to make it bind together to mix the stone in with the fines that are there and try to make it pack in. That was before you probably... Too much stone. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it seems to be too much stone.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be mixing in.
It'll be mixed in when it's graded. Is that what's...
We're going to have to add top coat gravel to in with it because it's so coarse.
That's fine.
We're going to have to add top coat gravel in to mix in with it, to make it so it's not so coarse. We did it so that if it went to mud, it would kind of... This was Terry's. The theory was it was going to try to tighten up the material that was there. If it decided to go to mud, there'd be something on top for people to kind of drive on and push down into it.
Okay. I'll just make the point that it's very hard to drive through, and it tends to washboard.
That's the only thing you can do. It's the only thing we can do, Tyler, when it goes to mud.
Yeah.
Plenty of mud before.
Well, I think what we're saying is that when the roads are impassable due to mud, about the only thing we can do to make them passable is to dump gravel on them.
The stone.
Yeah, it's not great, but we're talking about a standard that's passable or not passable Any other questions, comments about the roads?
No. We're working on Steve getting settled in, just going over a lot of the different things, cleaning up a little bit, and just getting reorganized to get going. We do have the license for the RSMS-11, which will do budgeting and road planning that Steve's going to get involved in with me, and we're all getting up and running. It's going to take a little couple of weeks to transition here, but we'll be up and running with new plans very soon.
Yeah. Well, the first thing we'll be asking you for... One of the first things we'll be asking you for is a list of road projects for the summer. As David said, we've got budget for maybe 21 feet of...
2,100 feet.
2,100 feet of rebuilding. 21 feet, yeah, of rebuilding. And so we'll want to target those worst areas, and we'll be looking to you to tell us where those are.
Some of those areas, Tam, that are bad right now, you might want to figure that if you're going to rebuild them in the summer, you might want to put in trench drains in there, too, if there's really a lot of water.
Mm-hmm.
Because the fabric is great. I don't dispute that a bit, but you've got to get rid of if there's a lot of water underneath. You've got to get rid of it. You've got to get rid of it. Well, you know that anyway.
Question, I'll ask all of you guys who know stuff more about me than roads, but Dave and I are reading some places that say the gravel base of the roads, including the fabric, is... Has a lifetime of 20 years. And I know... I've been told that we have roads in the hollow, for example, that were... The roads were laid without a base. Do we know that to be true?
I wouldn't doubt it. I can't.
Well, what they used to do, Tam, good examples of east road. What they would do when they widened those roads, because most roads used to have a stone wall on either side, and the road would be actually down to the hole. And to raise them up, they would take the stone walls on both sides and just put them in there. And then you build your road over that. But they wasn't... I mean, fabric has only been around for, I don't know, maybe 20 years.
I know Horton Hill was done that way. I can remember trees and everything on both sides, and it was just... One day, it was just all pushed in the middle, and then they started building on top of that.
And that's what it does cause a lot of problems with a lot of the roads, especially if it has...
Stumps.
Especially when stumps are put as the base of the road, and they break down. You know, you have a sinking roadway.
And big rocks in there.
Yeah, and big rocks. And then it becomes difficult... You have to really build a base over the top of all that. Once it flows off and gets scraped off over the years, you're back to the big rocks that are impossible to work with. And of course, the stump's rotting away, and the road's just caving in.
So there were a lot of issues with a lot of the roads that are being caused by that, I think. And up through the hollow, yeah, if they were done that way, we have to put a base in and... But a good example of where it worked is up on Murphy Hill, where it's very smooth. You crest a hill and you hit mud. But again...
Eric Road is a good example.
Eric Road, yeah.
Perron Road.
Yeah, Perron, the first part. And those are the things we have to plan out with what little we have, not to mention what 20 miles of paved road that need to be addressed, too. So we need to look more into the next budget here for increasing some of these things.
The other thing, David, too, is that Route 7A is just like a devoner of the town.
Mm-hmm.
On the west side of town, most of it, everything over there is either clay or slate gravel. Slate gravel's second cousin of clay. And everything on the east side of town is more granular glacial stone. So you're going to have more trouble with the west side.
Sounds about accurate.
That do it all my life.
Yeah.
Well, just one thing I was realizing when we were talking about that, if that's in fact the case, if roads... The road base has a 20-year lifetime, and we've got 50 miles of gravel road, we should be laying two and a half miles of fabric a year. Or laying a half a mile of fabric a year, so...
Yeah. And that's the thing we're going to have to look at, is at some point, we're going to have to increase the amount we're doing just to maintain. Increasing the maintenance will keep the roads that we have from getting worse, and the roads that are working, though, it'll extend their life. But at some point, we're going to have to increase the capital expenditures to start catching up on where we're behind. And it's not just the gravel on the paved roads. I've got a small estimate or a large estimate for a small section of Harvest Hills, and we need a lot more money for paving, because most of those paved miles are our responsibility. And paving is expensive. I mean, for a town or something, we have 20 miles of paved road. That's our responsibility. So that's, you know, a lot of miles, and a lot of it hasn't been done in many, many years.
One way it might help some, Dave, was Bennett, that a couple of years ago, they just took a milling machine down there, and they turned about probably a mile of paved road into dirt road.
And left it?
Left.
Yeah. Well, leave that decision up to the board. I'm not going to...
Well, no, but I just... I just...
Well, that's what we did.
Because paved roads are way more expensive.
That's what we did with the State Park Road. Well, that's what they...
Right.
They reclaimed it and smoothed it out. It's no longer dark.
Yeah.
But there are political issues with that. People who paid to live on a paved road might not want it turned into...
Somebody they wake up one morning to a gravel road. There might be little...
Depending how bad the paved road is.
Yeah, but on the other hand, it slows the traffic down.
Yeah. Well, on summer roads, I've seen some roads where whether the gravel or pavement, it doesn't seem to be having much of a difference.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
All right. Joe Vatican, our fire chief, has... Wants to talk to us about some equipment that the volunteers need.
I've got several proposals for some equipment that we'd like to purchase.
Steve, I gave him copies of everything Joe was...
I can scroll through this on screen if that's open.
The first one you have is pagers. I have a proposal by three pagers. At this point, it would go to the chiefs, to assistant chiefs. We have a new person that joined a couple of weeks ago, so he's... He took my last reserve pager, so I have no more. I'd like to keep one reserve pager in-house so that if somebody breaks their pager, I can give them one, because the pagers are sent to Wells Communication. Wells Communication, they don't fix them because they're under warranty, factory warranty, so they're sent to California to be fixed. So there's a lot of lead time from when I have them given to be fixed and getting them back. So what I do is I give them my reserve pager, and then... So this will give me another reserve pager and kind of keep ahead of the pagers so that we don't all of a sudden have 10 or 12 that are no longer usable, and then we've got to spend some really big money. This also comes with a three-year warranty plus a one-year warranty that comes... This also comes with a, a three-year warranty plus a one-year warranty that comes natural with the pagers. I think that's on there someplace, yeah, three-year extended service warranty, charger and, um, that's about it. And you can see that the cost is, uh, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, eighty-six cents for each pager. So that's, that would come out of the, uh, communications budget.
Right now, you said, uh, for you and the assistant chiefs, this is to replace the pagers that you have?
It would, it would, it would give us a spare, I would take my pager and I would use it as a spare and then we'd have two more spares for the time.
Oh, so you only have one pager right now?
I only have one pager in spare, yeah, actually I don't have any now, cause the young man that joined a couple of weeks ago, I gave him my last pager, so.
Okay. So, um, do all the volunteers have pagers?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just needing three more to outfit everybody, I got you.
If, um, I have a pager that's passed its warranty and something happens to it, it's not worth fixing, cause sometimes it's pretty costly to fix. Then I would have another pager just to put into, uh, service.
Um, just in case, uh, I'm the only one that didn't know this until today, but I looked it up and the, the thing about pagers is, is they operate off satellite signal, not off a cell phone tower signal, so it's not good enough to, to have a, to call everybody's cellphone when, when there's a fire going cause, uh, cellphone signals are not reliable, pager signals are. Okay?
Um, and the next one, float dock strainer. Uh, float dock strainer, where I, when proposing to replace two that we have currently onto our older trucks. This style that we have now, it's relatively new, um, the latest truck we bought, I bought this type of float dock strainer. And the difference between this, uh, piece of equipment and the old styles, the old style kinda came apart, it was very big and bulky and almost a two-minute project to try to use it. And it also didn't work well when you put it in the water, if you had, didn't have it just right, it would suck air. You create a vacuum within the pump and not, uh, produce a good flow or suction for the fire pump.
Can you back up and tell us what, what this is used for?
This, this is hooked onto a large diameter hose, a hard suction that we hook into the pumps of the truck to get water from say a pond or a river.
So you just throw it out in the pond?
So we just throw it out, and this one's self-leveling and one man can do it, it's a unit that's really no bigger than this where the other ones, you know.
So floats and the, that's, that's a filter that draws it in, okay.
That, that's what gives it ability to float, keep off the bomb from sucking debris. And I've, I did get three prices, um, and my recommendation was the top price, it was the middle of the road and we do, um,
It was up at the top.
A lot of work with VRS sales.
Your recommendation is VRS?
Sales quote, like I said, it's, it's about, it's the lowest price and we do a lot of work with them. Um, I actually contacted the company itself, Cocheck, which makes this type of strainer, they were the most expensive, which I couldn't quite figure out.
And fifteen hundred is the cost for two of them?
Uh, yeah, fourteen ninety-six, yeah.
Okay. All right, and we have budget for that?
Yeah, everything I have here is within my budget.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing that, in fact, we'll still have some, um, room under my budget, uh, after we're done with these purchases. So let's move on to the next one, what's it be?
Is there any recent, and the old, old one, bulky ones, are they just like, just ready to throw away or can you say give them to sell to another?
I don't see anybody wanting them, I mean, I, I wouldn't throw them away, you know, something happened to one of these guys, you can certainly use an old one temporarily.
One of the local, other local?
If somebody wanted them, I'd be more than happy to give them away, absolutely, I, I would put that out there. There's no need for them to sit in the back of the firehouse, but like I said, I definitely wouldn't throw them away. Turnout gear, now I've, I was pleasantly surprised by the prices that I got for turnout gear. And my recommendation was, um, at first, because I thought budget-wise, I could only afford to buy two sets. But as I looked through the prices, I was able to kind of, um, figure things out and, and get a list of guys who I thought needed replacement gear now. Um, I was able to come up with three sets of gear and one coat. And, um, you can see the various prices from the dealers, some are quite a bit more than the other two. And what we did is about, ten or eleven years ago, we received a grant from FEMA and we were able to buy new gear for everybody. It wasn't the best gear in the world, but everybody was able to get gear and, um, uh, about forty thousand dollars. That gear is now starting to, to wear and I've been trying every year, a couple of sets, just to keep up with it. And this is just a ongoing program, I, I would say, to, uh, to replenish that gear. NFPA suggests that gear be turned over every five years, but that's not practical for us, we don't have that many fires or that many calls. And the gear that we do turn over is mostly just interior guys, so that's even a smaller group of guys. Guys that run the pump panels or, or direct traffic don't need brand-new gear and theirs are more than adequate. So this is mostly to replace gear for guys that are interior and, um, are fighting fire directly, so. So, uh, as I said, the price, uh, for coat and pants, uh, for VRS sales was one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. Reynolds and Sons, which was Fire Decks, um, was two thousand five hundred and fifty-six. And then, um, Globe, which is kind of one of the industry standards, Globe's been around for a long time, it's a, it's a well-known gear. Came in sixteen sixty-seven. And when I had a meeting, I thought that was gonna be the most expensive, it ended up being the cheapest, so, um, I was surprised there. If we went with the Globe with the, the three firefighters I had mentioned, plus the one coat, it would be just about six thousand dollars. It came out to five ninety-nine ninety-seven. And again, that would be well within my, my budget limit of, uh, equipment fund. Guys so choose to go that way. Um, it's just the coats and pants, it's not a helmet and boots, they're, we're all set there.
Okay.
Why is there so much difference in that, is, uh, is all of different? You, uh, different places, different, same equipment?
No, they're not the same. Uh, last time I came here, I ca- I gave prices on the same ones and I was told that they, it was preferred that I give prices for dealers that were local. So that if anything happens, they didn't, uh, we got somewhere to go back to. You know, so these are all local, I say local, they're within an hour of here, you know, I, I know all these places. So, um, if, if the pants don't fit, cause they were measured wrong or, or whatever it may be, we could go back and say, listen, this isn't right.
What I'm saying, Joe, is the twenty-five hundred dollar one, i- is, is that good enough to be that much more money than the, the sixteen hundred dollar? I mean, I don't wanna buy equipment that's not gonna keep a man safe in a fire.
Yeah, I've looked at all three sets of gear.
Yeah.
And I think that, I mean, maybe you can make arguments for your own gear if you're a salesman, but I think they're all, um, comparable. I'm not gonna say for sure that one's better than the other, but for a thousand dollars, are you really getting what you paid for? So that, that's my only thing.
Yeah, well, like I say, I, I wanna make sure that guys are safe when they're in a fire, as safe as they can be.
If you go with the Globe, I've seen Globe being used by the North Bankton Fire Department, um, their whole department has it. They received a grant and that's what they bought and they're very happy with it.
Right.
It's holding up well.
Globe comes and measures the individuals for them.
That's why they, they take the responsibility. If I went with just say, you know, Globe, I got three prices, one may be from a dealer, but the other two would have to be online, because the dealer, this is his area, I can't go to Rhode Island and say, come on up, even though, you know, you sell Globe, cause you can't cross in each other's territory. So, um, you know, so they're gonna measure it and they're gonna take responsibility for their measurements, if they're wrong, then it's on their shoulders.
Do I understand correctly Bergeron is the, the dealer and Globe is the manufacturer?
Yeah, Globe is the, is the, the gear, Fire Dex is the gear, um, or is the gear, and those are the salesmen, VRS, Reynolds and Bergeron.
Okay. Is that it?
There's one more, there's an extrication pump.
Yep, the Jaws of Life pump.
This is the pump, I, I mentioned it once before, a while back, months ago. And David and I sat down and tried to figure out where we could get the money from without going over budget and, you know, not stranding us without money within our budget. My first idea was to take it from the reimbursement fund, that's why it was created, to replace extrication, um, equipment. Cause then David and I talked and we realized that if we order this right, we could pay for it from our budget this year and then our fiscal budget of next year. That would save that money that's in that reimbursement fund for more emergencies or something that comes down the future that we don't know about, um.
Well, this is in FY sixteen, which, uh, is budgeted for FY sixteen, which comes available July one, but you're saying you wanna get it now?
I, not today, if we ordered it a, a month and a half from now, it's certainly fine, you know, but if we could, if we paid it from two different fiscal years, it wouldn't be a burden on either year, like ten thousand dollars, um, almost.
At one point, you were talking about two pumps.
And there's, there was, yes, some ideas there, but, you know, for now, this is gonna do well for us, um, we've got some other ideas for later on, maybe in a year or two, where maybe that reimbursement would come into play, but wouldn't be a burden with the taxpayers. But this is, you know, what we're thinking right now. This would, this would get rid of that old worn-out pump, um, give us the ability to use all our tools at full capacity at this point.
Is, is this, I mean, is, are, are our tools, I mean, this is a brand-new pump, obviously, newer than a tools, are the tools calibrated to handle a pump like this?
Actually, the tools are new. Yeah, we bought the tools a couple of years ago, so the, the tools, it's kinda like hand-in-hand. Now, we couldn't afford everything at one time, so we bought the tools, now we're buying the pump to help.
They're outdated, they're, they're specked out for this.
Yeah.
Pump, you're not gonna get out of something and just blow the whole tool all the hell?
No, 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 that's, uh.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, we don't wanna pump this without man or tools, obviously, but, um, and that's why, you know, you kinda have to buy it from the same, um, dealer, cause you can't cross, you know, like Ford parts and Chevy parts, it just doesn't, you know, mix and match, so.
And this is also because we need, we, it's more ordering in advance, cause it's not gonna be like delivered tomorrow.
Right.
You know, so it, we need the money from fiscal sixteen that we get budgeted for extrication equipment. It's more like to get the order in because we want permission to do it now so that we can get it on time.
And we'll tell them when we want it delivered, we'll give them a delivery date, whatever's convenient for us.
Okay. Yeah, not a problem.
If this is within their budget, you don't need a motion from us then?
Well, typically, we pass motions for all large expenditures, but, uh, I, just in terms of, uh, identifying vendors and that sort of thing.
Okay.
These are, uh, these are all in the, uh, the three to ten thousand dollar range that requires quotes, but not, uh, closed bid solicitation, so, um, I think it's appropriate to, uh, to pass a motion.
Okay, I make that motion that we, that, uh, we follow Joe's recommendations and let him order it.
All right. We have a motion and it is seconded to, take the fire chief's advice and spend, um, seventeen hundred and six dollars and fifty-eight cents on pagers. Fourteen hundred and ninety-six dollars for two float dock strainers.
Is that each?
Each.
Two.
That's it.
That's for two.
Fourteen hundred dollars is?
Is for two.
For two or is it?
For two.
Yeah. And sixteen hundred, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents for turnout gear.
No, five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine.
I, I broke it down so you can see.
Oh, there it is.
That would be the total for.
Okay. Five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents for turnout gear. That was it. Oh, no, and ninety-eight hundred dollars for an extrication pump. David, you can fill in those blanks later with your, with your notes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Joe. I have a letter for you that you can bring to the next meeting, it's, um, the three chiefs were elected last week.
Oh, okay.
So for your approval, I'll submit that to you for me.
All right, very good, thanks, Joe.
Joe, can I call you tomorrow? Is that your number, three, four, zero, zero, six, one? Okay, can I give you a call, are you gonna be around tomorrow at all?
Yeah, I'll be around.
Okay. Just for the Shastree Historical Society, get you to walk through.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, item ten is the, uh, artist work agreement for the Coal Spring Project. I, uh, was negligent once again and just got this out today, uh, to the distribution, but we can read through it, it's not very long. It says, agreement for art design and fabrication services, this agreement confirms the engagement of Angus McCullough by the town of Shastree, Vermont, for art design and fabrication services for the Coal Spring Historic Site Project. Angus McCullough, working in the direction of project leader Tim Skagans, will provide fifteen thousand dollars in art design and fabrication divided as follows. That's the entire Vermont Art Council grant and it will all go toward art fabrication and design. Uh, forty-eight hundred in art designs fees and, uh, ten thousand two hundred dollars in fabrication and installation cost. This agreement sets design fees for the first phase of the design work, subsequent agreements will set fees for later phases of design and fabrication. This is to get us started with, uh, some sort of design to, uh, uh, be able to say what this project is gonna look like. Some of the things that Angus and I have talked about as far as what the art might be, uh, perhaps a sculpture that is, uh, reminiscent of the, the pipeline and the water distribution system at Coal Spring. Uh, another idea we've kicked around is maybe something, uh, inlaid in the ground that shows, uh, pipe distribution, that's, that's just where we've gotten so far, and so far, we're just really brainstorming, so, um, really, we don't know what this project is gonna look like yet and that's what, uh, some of, what his art design fees will do in this first phase. But we do know we would like to, uh, uh, create a, a place that commemorates the history there, uh, allows people to step off the road and, uh, see the springs flowing and if, uh, the permit gods allow to, uh, to drink the water someday. Certainly, you can go there now and drink the water, no one's gonna stop you, and I do that regularly, but, uh, if we turn it into a park, there will no doubt be, uh, be issues there. The agreement goes on to say, at the direction of the project leader, Angus McCullough will provide services that include site maps and drawing. One thing art, uh, Angus has already done, uh, without being paid for, he's taken, uh, uh, the eighteen sixty-five survey of the pipeline that I got from, uh, Joe McGovern and he's overlated on a map, so, uh, art, you were talking about following where that pipe goes and, uh, looking, making sure that everyone along the route is, is aware and knows that their rights will be protected. Now we can do that, cause we have, uh, we have, we can see where that goes on a, on an actual map. Uh, research the oral history of the site and interview with neighbors, uh, concise, elegant drawings of the proposal, hand-drawn and CAD and otherwise. Site models, multiple sketch models and/or presentation model, begin sculpture and fountain design, one or more photo renderings of proposed project. Three-part booklet of site history, design precedents and proposals, physical model, create material for press purposes or fundraising to be done by the town of Shastree. lead neighborhood meetings, design charrette, which is a new word for me, but that's when, when artists brainstorm, they call it a charrette, speak at town meeting, et cetera. Expected total hours spent for first phase of work, fifty to sixty hours at thirty-five dollars an hour, which is seventeen fifty to twenty-one hundred dollars, and he would like to get nineteen hundred dollars now to, to start work. I move we approve the work agreement, do I have a second? Can I have a second for discussion purposes?
Second for discussion purposes.
Thank you, discussion.
Yeah, so is this money, you've already got the grant, we've got, obviously, it's been, where is this money? Is it in the town, or is it in the reserve fund?
It's in the Town's bank account.
Yeah, it's in the Town's bank account, I believe, and she's not here, but I believe a special fund was created, the money's segregated off the side, it's a separate fund that only this can, only fun, money for this project can come out of. It's not, it's just separate from town funds.
Okay.
I'm concerned we got the cart before the horse until we find out what the legal ramifications are of somebody else doing something there. As, as Mr. Daly said, there, not only are, is there water rights to the water, but there's also rights to the physical property that's there, and when we start doing stuff around there, I want to make sure that, that we have a legal, that we are doing it legally, and I think the only way you can do that is by getting permission from all the people that have water rights there. That's, I, I'm hesitant about, because if I understand it, if this thing is stalled someplace, we owe the money back.
We do, and the most that we're proposing to spend now would be nineteen hundred dollars. And the reason, reason we need to spend this now is because people need to know what this looks like. If we try to do fundraising or get grants, we can, we have a better chance of doing that if we have a more concrete proposal. What we have now is just what I have described. And with nineteen hundred dollars, we can move down the road on showing what this project will look like, get more community support for it, raise those additional funds. What you say is absolutely true, and I'm working on that, but I have to acquire other grant funds to pay for those legal fees.
So you don't see that as part of Angus's responsibility, you see that as somebody else's responsibility?
Correct, I see that as my responsibility to, to, to make sure that the permitting and the legal issues are fleshed out. But yeah, no, Angus is not going to do legal issues and permitting, he's going to design a space at Coal Spring for us.
You're talking about putting the fountain up down there on that, too? Does I understand, or am I?
Yes, that's what I would like to do, yes.
Well...
This is gonna be a...
Where does that pipe, that runs someplace, that water, don't it? Isn't there a water line that comes out of that?
There are several water lines, there's the main water line that goes for a mile down to Park McCullough House. Several people have water lines there that get their household water from there, and then lots, lots of water continues to flow into Coal Spring Brook and flows down, down the countryside.
Most of those lines have been there for a long, long time, haven't they?
Yes, a long time.
So you might want to be pretty careful if you start poking around in there, turn somebody's water off.
Of course we will.
Well, I'm just stating the fact, or the obvious, you might say.
I mean, but, I mean, we're not gonna do anything nearly as drastic as Arcton Company did a few years ago, when they dug it up and filled it full of gravel to make sure that the water continued to flow. We're not gonna do anything nearly that invasive.
I, I just see this growing to be a line item in the budget for the taxpayers to pay for, unless you're gonna apply for grants every year. You gotta, you gotta, a fountain, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to winterize that, you're gonna have to start it up in the spring, you're gonna have to maintain it, it's, I mean, just getting it there is gonna cost, what, what, you figured about fifty-five thousand to start, or whatever, fifty? And then maintaining it every year is gonna be another five to ten on the...
Five to ten thousand dollars to winterize a fountain?
Well, in maintenance, when it breaks.
Pick up the trash. As long as I'm alive, I'll pick up the trash, because it's down the street from me.
That's my concern, that if you come in a line item for the town, I mean, I'm all for historical preservation, obviously. I don't think, I mean, that's, I just send my two cents.
We don't spend five to ten thousand dollars a year on Howard Park. We're not gonna spend five to ten thousand dollars a year on...
We do spend five to ten thousand dollars a year at Howard Park, and more than that. That's not the point, I'm just saying, that's a park, that's a public, this is a park, we're gonna, we're gonna establish another park, or are we gonna establish a historic site?
You're asking, is it gonna be a park or a historic site?
I heard, I heard historic, and I heard you say park.
I would think of it as a park. I mean, it's not much more than a historic site, there's not gonna be anything there except perhaps a drinking fountain, and maybe not that, but it would be somewhere between a park and a historic site? I don't understand why that's an important distinction.
Well, you just said you were just compared to Tower Park, which was, I didn't even go near, well, I was...
Right.
So I'm just saying that it's a...
Have you had two hundred square foot park that's gonna cost five to ten thousand dollars a year? That's what I was questioning.
If something happens to a pump on a fountain, it's gonna cost more, it's gonna, it's gonna cost money.
That's my two cents.
I, I agree with Art in that, I think we are putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to know legally whether we can have access at all to that area. I think it's a great idea to commemorate a historic site, but before you do that, you need to know...
And you're not willing to risk nineteen hundred dollars to make that happen? I mean, the, the initial design, the having something to look at, will go a long way toward allowing me to get the money I need to solve those legal issues. The town did not give me the money I needed to, to start those legal issues going, so now I'm doing it all from grants.
I think for a reason they didn't give you that authority, I think people are concerned about their water rights.
Well, there's a chicken and egg question here, they want to know what it is they're paying for, and I've gotta have money to tell them what it is they're paying for.
I know, I know, I know.
All we're asking for here is nineteen hundred dollars. Any more discussion? All in favor of agreeing to the work agreement for art design and fabrication at Coal Spring, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion fails two to three. So gentlemen, what would you have me do, abandon the project?
I think put it on hold until you get a legal opinion, and I don't know how you do that with the money, but I think a legal opinion is important before we go poking around.
Okay.
Does McCullough, given history, does the McCullough House or Foundation have any of that information that's readily available in the archives?
Archives, they have some information, more information is probably at UVM. I haven't made the trek to UVM to dig that up, but I've, I've tracked down, I think, where it's at.
Well, would Angus be able to do some of that legwork?
That was what that motion was for.
I would think, given the fact that he's at McCullough, that he may want, in fact, investigate his heritage.
Yeah, well, you would've thought Shastbury would want to investigate their heritage, too, but we just demonstrated that we don't. All right, let's move on. Property purchase on North Road, we have some documents to sign.
Yeah, the first thing is a capital improvement note, this is from the last meeting, the board approved getting the note forty thousand dollars to purchase the property on North Road pending legal review. The lawyers changed a couple of words in the resolution, so it was all redone by People's Bank, and this is just assigned, that is the exact same thing, it's two percent interest rate with no fees involved with it, it's three annual payments of thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars a year, the first payment in 2016, the last payment in 2018. And it's the same documents as last week, this is the note, there's a certificate of registration that'll be signed by the Town's transfer agent, which is the treasurer. There's the capital improvement borrowing resolution from the Town, same thing. That's what had to be changed, because in the original resolution, the law office felt that it sounded like a balloon payment in 2018, instead of three equal payments, so the wording was changed to reflect three equal payments. There's also another form, it's the non-arbitrage certificate, just saying that we're gonna use the money for what we said we're gonna use it for, and they all have to be motioned and approved by the board. And just so you know, there's tax forms that also the treasurer has to fill out and sign.
Okay.
But the, the basic is that it's the forty thousand dollar note to buy the North Road property, it is not traditional mortgage, it's a capital improvement bond, and it's for a rate of forty, thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars a year, I believe is the total.
All right, I move that we approve the capital improvement note to purchase the North Road property. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ken stepped out.
Ken stepped out, so that motion is passed four, zero, zero. I move that we approve the capital improvement borrowing resolution for the North Road property. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved, four, zero, zero. I move that we approve the non-arbitrage certificate for capital improvement borrowing for the North Road property.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved, four, zero, zero. Is that it for that one?
That's it for that one.
All right. We are up to Howard Park bid proposals.
I circulated bid proposals for both the tennis courts and roof repairs at Howard Park. Read a review, if they're approved, I'll put them out by the end of the week on the website and in appropriate places, contacting a few contractors. I want to make one change to the roof repair bid.
Oh, that's right, too.
And that will just be to add on, replacing the fascia boards and just a little other woodwork that's, that's damaged. I should've included that in the roof repair bid.
In the scope of work?
Work, yes, so I'll just add that in there.
So what is it you want to say?
It'll be just adding in repairs to the fascia boards and other minor carpentry work.
Is that for the roof bid?
Yeah, that's for the roof bid.
Is that F-A-C-I-A, or?
Yes.
Okay. Repair fascia boards and other minor, and do other minor carpentry? All right. Okay, I move that we approve the invitation to bid for roof repairs at Howard Park as amended.
Quick, is this all the buildings, or is this certain buildings?
This is certain buildings.
And is that identified in here?
Yes, it is, noise, site equipment building, dugouts, and concession stand.
Okay. I saw that, I didn't get a chance to read it.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mitch, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion to approve the invitation to bid on the roof repairs passes five, zero, zero.
The second one is the resurfacing of the tennis courts at Howard Park. Very specific requirements for the work to be done here, cleaning the surface, filling cracks. It's gonna take a company with some experience doing this. The courts themselves are very well-built in the first place, they've lasted a great period of time, and really with the proper work done now, that will really extend the life quite a bit.
Yeah, I had a question about the elite fill part, I didn't understand that. You had a minimum scope of work, and then two options that involved... Or let's see, at least one option involved an additional bullet about elite fill?
Yeah, work to be completed and the following options, it was a... This is a difference that was pointed out by when these were first done last year by a tennis resurfacing company, that explained that this is the way that it should be done, because this difference between the rubberized... Where is it again? Sorry, my glasses. Rubberized liquid crack fill in the E three thirty acrylic binder, is a difference that we should scope out and have two different presentations on it.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're gonna get a, an A and a B?
Yeah, this is based on the original estimates, because this is all part of the state grant, this is based on the original estimates we, we received from a company that does this, you know, this is what they do, is resurface tennis courts, and this is a suggestion on bidding formats to get the right, right things and the options that you want.
Okay.
So that elite fill would do more than just do the crack, it would do another seal on top of that, and on top of everything, three times, and that'll be then?
Yeah, it's, it's, this is more than just filling the cracks in and brushing it off, this is gonna be, there's a, there's a way to seal a tennis court and then line it properly, and there's a type of paint, an acrylic paint you use for the lines, it's not, you know, like lining a street, it's a, it's a different type of material, which is why this is, is a little bit expensive, but it'll preserve the court for a long time.
Motion to accept request for bids for the resurfacing of the tennis court at Howard Park. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Bid request for resurfacing the tennis courts is approved, five, zero, zero.
The other thing that I had been talking about with a member of the Lions Club, that they're interested in being involved in some of the projects there, I think Mr. Hardy will be speaking at the Lions Club tomorrow night on these things. There are things, the electrical work, which is the original estimation of three thousand dollars, he's informing that they have people who might be willing to do that, we would cover electricians, you know, we would cover the, the permit fee, and this is my preliminary discussions with Mr. Hardy, we would cover the permit fee, the rental of the horse truck, and any electrical equipment they need, but they would do the work voluntarily as a member of the Lions. We've also talked about the basketball backboard and rim, there was discussion of repainting those or something, and they're not, they're not very good. So what I would do is go forward with buying the equipment, and again, they volunteered, or they proposed to volunteer to, to take down the old ones and install the new ones. And again, any equipment costs involved, that we'll just pay for, and they'll do it as a volunteer project. They've also volunteered to do painting, or have proposed, one of the proposals is to do painting. I asked him if he would stop at the rec meeting, committee meeting next Monday, excuse me, to discuss this with, with the board, with the rec board. The other things that were on the original, the trail camera, because we would be saving some money with the, with the volunteer labor from the Lions, we can, might be able to upgrade the security system. I also talked with Mr. Hardy about the front gates, as a project of doing something with those, because they're, they're pretty bad, even the sign at the front, and that's why I invited him to meet with the rec committee next week, so that we could go through and all be on the same page. They may have a bid on, other people will bid on the tennis courts and things like that, too. The water fountain, also, we might change, because the cheapest, most functional water fountain that I found for the grant application was a little over two thousand dollars. And I was talking to Walter about getting an old-fashioned kind of spigot for the end of it, the pipe. it, the pipe, just so that when someone knocks it off, we can just basically screw a new one back on and not be a two thousand dollar water fountain that once it gets trashed is, we're out two thousand. Hopefully, the security cameras and everything will deter that, but it's just something that, two thousand seems like an awful lot for a water fountain. You know, and most, frankly, most kids bring bottled water or will buy one at the concession stand while they're there. So, it's just not really.
Well, we need water at the park. I mean, it's got, you know.
Yeah.
Baseball, soccer.
Yeah.
All that stuff going on. Waters, water in bathrooms are a basic function at a park that size, so.
It'll be, it'll be some kind of fountain, maybe not a two thousand dollar fountain. Because I just thought that was like extraordinarily expensive for a water fountain, but.
Yeah. Well, if you try to get one that's vandal proof, that's what they cost. They end up being a big block of cement. But just like a metal one sticking out of the side of the wall is that much, too?
Uh, well, the ones sticking out of the side of the wall, yeah, that one would be the first one to get ripped off. That's something I never saw because it was ripped off before I went to the park. But I think that's pretty much what was there, and they're pretty easy to smack down. So, what we're thinking of is something kind of like the old-fashioned one where you just go up and turn the knob, and you would get water. You could fill your water bottle or get a drink and a drain. But it would be very simplistic so that even if it got damaged, it wouldn't be more than a trip to Home Depot for twenty bucks and come back with the new fittings you need.
Yeah. I mean, it's got to be automatic shut-off. We can't just.
Yeah.
Expect people to.
Yeah, just so when you crank it, it'll just float back to the way it was. Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, are we really that afraid of the water fountain getting knocked off that we're not going to put another one up? It just seems like.
Well, we can.
Something that you have at a park.
There'll be, there'll be more things that you have. We'll have more things. That's just a thought right now. That's not in the bid process right now. We won't have to bid for that because pretty much they'll all be well under three thousand. You know, this is the highest I would ever go, two thousand for a water fountain. And we'll bring in some options, you know, as we get closer to that point. But the big thing is that the Lions have offered, you know, a lot of work and coordinating that in. The roof work obviously is something that we'll have done. And the tennis courts is, it's kind of specialty work, so we'll see who bids. But their volunteers are allowing us a lot more flexibility in maybe even upgrading the work to the tennis courts. And because we were only getting a ten thousand dollar grant from the state, matching grant, you know, I stopped counting things to do when I hit twenty-four thousand dollars. So, I'm sure there's more things to do. We can certainly find more things to do. So, there will be no money left over from the grant, that's for sure. We'll just move ahead and get the bids. And the tennis courts, the timeframe could be very late in the year, but once it's done, you'll have courts ready for a long time.
Do they get used a lot now? I know they used to, and like when they were first built forty years ago or whatever, they were used all the time. Are there teams in town that use those up there to practice or anything? Does anyone know?
Well, yeah. I asked about that, too. It seems not, nobody really has a good set on how many people do that. I mean, some people I've seen in there occasionally walking up the street during the summertime. I have no idea the actual volume. I don't know how we would do that except when monitoring, we might be able to do that. I have to tell you, and everybody who's looked at them, the quality of the original construction is extremely high. So, if we, the original estimate from last year was close to eight thousand, so maybe now it's even ten thousand. It's money well-invested, no matter what it costs because you're not going to replace those for anything. Maybe new, with new netting, new signs, and some enforcement of please don't walk your dogs on the tennis courts. Because I've seen that, too, where people unleash the dog and let the dog run around inside the tennis court.
Oh, because it's fenced in.
Because it's fenced in, and it's really, you know, unfortunate. And we're only going to redo one of the basketball courts with the new things, just see if that attracts anybody to go up there and play some ball there. And maybe when parents come up where other kids are playing soccer, someone will go over and play on a revitalized court, you know. It's, we'll put the opportunity out there, how much it'll be used. I know kids play basketball over here all the time at the school. So, maybe with new backboards and things, some other kids will go up to the park and play.
Maybe, yeah, maybe start a little summer program for kids or something.
Yeah, I mean.
Elementary school, get them interested in tennis.
Opens the thing up and brings it up to, hopefully, it'll bring it up to a level where everything is fairly restored by the end of the year. And then we can look at bigger and better things up there. I know that the scouts are going to be working on the trail again in a couple of weeks, cleaning up. They're going to have a camp out in the park and work on the trail. So, we'll have painted buildings, re-roofed buildings, new tennis courts, refurbished tennis courts, and it'll be a different park by the end of the year.
Did you have anything else to say about green-up day, item thirteen?
No, I think we covered that earlier, May second. And everything except for maybe the ladybugs will be the same. I had no idea there were sixty ladybugs put out.
Karen put a lot of work into that.
She did. I had a nice talk with her about this and everything, and I was like, wow, Karen, you put in a lot of work today.
Did the ladybugs get stored somewhere?
I believe Karen has a ladybug, so.
And I believe Karen bought the little Susan B. Anthony dollars.
Yes.
To give people who found a ladybug out of her own pocket each year.
Yes. She, from the, I understand it was like coffee and donuts or whatever she had here. And yeah, she basically funded this and organized it. And I understand she did talks at the schools and everything else. And it's quite, quite a lot of volunteering went into that. And we just don't have the people to do that. The rec committee just simply is not able, the huge rec committee of two people. So, if anyone wants to volunteer to be on the rec committee, that would be fine, too. But they don't have the time or the ability to go around and do all that this year. So, it'll be a little bit downscaled for this year. If we get volunteers, if you want to volunteer, we can pick it right back up next year.
All right. Item fourteen, requesting applicants for animal control officer appointment.
Okay. Basically, what I want to do is, and this is open to everyone, including our current animal control officer. The town currently has a payment line for an animal control officer, and then we pay a stipend of nearly five hundred dollars a month to leave holes at kennels. What I want to do is advertise for an animal control officer and look for a competitive bid on a place for, to place the dogs if the animal control officer picks it up. That would be on a, hate to say, but dog-by-dog basis. And most of this works by the fact that if our ACO picks up a dog, brings it to the kennel, kennel holds the dog for seven days. If it isn't claimed, we'd have to pay those seven days. So, you agree to a rate on that. And then if it can't be adopted out, we'd have to take other action, and we'd pay for that as we do now. If the dog's claimed by the owner, the owner's responsible for the kennel bill, and that all has to be settled before the dog's released. So, I would like to see cutting down on the five hundred dollars a month we're currently spending on a kennel, whether or not we have a dog or not. Also, at some point, when this ordinance was passed, and the animal control officer's duties are limited by state law and by our own ordinance, which is allowable at the state law, this is all the ACO has to do, is respond to these types of calls and take action. Also, at some point, these forms that I've never seen, there's an animal control incident report. If they get called out, you just, the ACO fills it out. We get a copy so we know what the ACO is doing. I mean, we're paying. We should have some idea. There's a dog release agreement. When the dog's released, the owner, it's signed. We know who's paid what. There's a simple monthly report form, just so we have some records of what we're paying for. We don't have any of these forms. We don't receive any of these forms now. And it's just a way of keeping track. Now, in the investigation I've done of other places, there's, you guarantee pretty much like a half hour a day so that the person can call into a dedicated phone line and take messages, or listen to the messages anyone's left about any animal control problems, and they respond to that. You pay a minimum of an hour if the person's called out, and of course, anything over that. But there's no monthly stipend as far as a kennel or anything else like that. I think you should bid it out. And like I said, it's open, would be open to anyone who can provide the equipment, the transportation, and the kennel. We will also work on a contract with a local kennel. There's one in Bennington, Bennington uses one over here in North Bennington. There's other kennels in the area, too. Or even the animal hospital may be interested in some kind of arrangement. But at five hundred dollars a month right now, I think it's time we found out what else is out there. Let's just see. If nothing else, maybe if the arrangement stays the same, we negotiate what we're doing now. I mean, it's, the only job description was written by the person who has the job, and it's, it has really, it's nice, but this is what we need to do. It's a very limited scope position, and everything else, the town really doesn't need to be involved in or pay for. So, I think it's just a time to move on. I've spoken to a couple of ACOs in other towns and how it works, and every town is different. There's no structure from the state saying you must appoint this, and it works this way. Nothing like the health officer that has a bunch of rules. It's either you follow state law, or like we did, we enacted our ordinance based strictly on the state law, and you follow that. It's pretty simple. You get the call, you pick the dog up, and you bring it to a kennel. It's either claimed or unclaimed. We really don't need to get much deeper into it than that. Vicious dog complaint, well, that's a whole 'nother matter, but that all winds up in front of the select board. But there's limits to the scope of it. I'd just like to see us get back to the scope of what the ACO is supposed to be doing and, you know, hopefully pay a little bit less for it.
Makes sense to me.
Yep. I agree.
The biggest complaint I'm hearing is that our current person just doesn't respond to anything.
And, you know, we get like an annual report, but, I mean, one dog was picked up, and I had the person sitting at my desk seven days later at two o'clock, and it was exactly seven days later at two o'clock, and that's when you can euthanize a dog. And she was like, I don't want this dog euthanized. I might be able to do anything. I'm like, I didn't even know that we had a dog because we don't get any of these reports that someone took the time to make up, but we don't get them turned in. And I think as any, if we have an ACO and is not even, is an employee of the town, we should know what's going on. It's not that simple. So, if it's all right with the board, I'm going to pursue that. And hopefully, by the next meeting, or the meeting after at the latest, we'll be able to appoint someone and move on.
All right. By consensus, we'll allow David to proceed with requesting applications for animal control officer. And we're to fifteen, Town Administrators Report.
Yeah, one more thing to sign. We're going to re-sign the annual financial plan for town highways. I was down District One, and we just changed the number. We changed the format a little bit. It's the same amount of money. This is actually just the town's budget. We put things in different columns. Just, it works better on the grant later on. So, it's the same numbers. It's just changing that one form that has to be signed by the board. That's basically the town highway budget, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars and change there. But on the other one, we had originally discussed putting in the Class Three road grant, the culvert fund, and they said take all that out of there. They don't want that in there. They just base the funding out of the actual maintenance budget.
All right. I approve, I move that we approve the annual financial plan for town highways for submission to the state.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that all for?
Nope.
Nope.
I'd like to just remind everyone, we have two ongoing burning complaints. Both have been investigated in the past. I've sent a warning notice out to one party. That's going to be followed up again. I've spoken to Jerry Madison, the fire warden. He's following up on both of them again now, and we're going to contact the sheriff. And just reminding everyone that we do have a burning ordinance in town. It's online. You can call a fire warden if you have any questions, especially in this very dry season. If you're having a fire and it gets out of control, you will be held responsible. If you don't have a permit and you're burning, or you're burning in the village, or you're burning garbage, the fines are quite large. And we are moving to have, disenforced by the sheriff, and we'll issue our own summonses if need be. So, please, do not burn in the village, and do not burn anywhere unless you've checked with the fire warden. This is, this can become a serious issue. There were a couple of fires lately just around here. I believe last Friday afternoon or Thursday afternoon, there was one up the road here.
Trains couldn't go back up through because it was far beside the tracks.
Yeah.
Was it, did the train start it? Was it a spark from the train, or someone burning?
I don't know.
I saw that. I saw that, and I saw a guy go by with the fire, do the truck. I saw him go over to the north station, and I heard a whoop, whoop. But I didn't see any trucks go. He must have gone out the back way.
Yeah.
Instead, he came down seven, eight, and went out. And I was wondering, but I thought it was Lake Shasbury, but it must have been farther on.
It was pretty far up.
Depot.
Yeah, yeah.
On depot.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we have to, everyone has to be aware of that. And burning garbage, which has come up in two recent cases also, is kind of a major violation. And this only requires buying an access permit and a sticker and taking your garbage to the landfill. So, there's really no way around that. It's a health hazard, and we need, we will bring an end to it. It had stopped with a letter, one of the complaints, and if the letter's not going to have effect, then we'll just sign complaints.
Is Oliver Duran retired as the, as fire warden?
Not officially, I don't believe yet, but that might be part of the votes because I know Oliver was talking about.
Yes, okay.
Jerry is moving into that capacity, too. And I've informed him of both the recent cases that I've been questioned about, and he's familiar with both parties, and he's going to continue looking into that. The other thing is, for a lot of people who have these concerns, especially about burning, the thing really to do is to call the fire department when the burning's going on and have them respond. That way, I get some written notification that there was an illegal burn taking place. To find out afterwards, I can't do anything. Unless I see the fire, I can't do anything. Unless the sheriff shows up and sees the fire, they can't do anything. Call when the burning's taking place so that someone can record that they saw a fire burning, or be willing to come forward and sign a complaint. Because it has to be in our presence. We can't, we can't just base it on someone saying that, you know, the night before last, they were burning outside. We need to have some immediacy to it. And for burning like out in the woods, just starting a fire that's way too big, you know, just call the fire department. They'll come, they'll record it, and we can pursue that. If the fire department says they came and to this burning, we can pursue that. But we can't really pursue something we hear about a day later. You know, it's just very difficult. The next item is just a matter of information, speaking of fires, that there will be a fireworks display for a private wedding. This will be in June. It's permitted by the state and us. And Joe, this is from Joe Vatican. I just want to make you aware of it. All the permits are in insurance, professional company out of Rhode Island, I think. So, someone's having a wedding, and they're going to have fireworks, so.
Where's it going to be?
Uh, Rollin' Road.
Rollin'.
No. Maple Hill Road.
I remember saying, wow.
We have, we have one more thing. Today's LEOP Day. Local Emergency Operations Plan has to be signed today. I just got this this morning from Jerry. This requires the chair, the select board to sign somewhere. On the first page, if you've taken your ICS one hundred online.
You want me to swear that I've taken?
We'll sign this tomorrow. Then go take your course. And this is required by the state every year. It's the Local Emergency Operations Plan. I'm sure you've all.
And it's due today?
No, it's due by the end of the month. So, if.
Oh, okay.
The ICS one hundred is like a twenty-minute course, which I'll refresh everyone's, we all have to take it.
Right.
The whole board, myself, have to take it. It's online at FEMA, and there's links to it. You just take it. It's a pass fail. It takes maybe twenty minutes, and it prints out a little certificate for you.
So, we all have to do it by the end of the month?
Uh, one of you has to do it by the end of the month, as I stare at the chair.
That goes without saying, yeah.
It's very short, but then we can sign this.
Okay. And then I sign it, or I do?
Yeah, you'll just have to sign it here.
Am I signing for the board, or am I signing for myself?
Well, you're signing for the board. So, the board should approve this now, and then you can sign it when you. So the board should approve this now and then you can sign it when you.
I'll make a motion that we have Tim sign the Local Emergency Operation Plan.
Pending his completing the ICS 100 training.
Pending, pending ICS 100 training.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That, uh, motion to accept the Local Emergency Operations Plan passes five zero zero. Pending.
Pending.
By taking the training.
You graduation from that course. Uh, we have one catering, uh, liquor control application. This is for an event at the President's House, Bennington College up on Madison Avenue. The event is June 4th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. with approximately 45 guests. It'll be, uh, catered by Aramark, uh, doing businesses, dining hall, K and A, whatever that is. Alls we need is for the board to, uh, have this in the record and that you approve of it. And then it'll be signed by Judy and sent back in.
Motion to accept the request for a cater.
It's a permission. It's permission for, for, uh, liquor usage at distribution.
At the President's House on Madison Avenue in Shasbury for the Bennington College.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. But then Judy signs it.
Yeah, Judy signs it. You don't sign that. That's just for the board. It has to be in the minutes of the meeting. And then Judy signs and seals it. And the last thing is just a reminder that the municipal, municipal solid waste variable rate pricing ordinance is on the website. It's in the Bennington banner on Saturday, this past weekend's edition. And, um, it's at the post offices at Paulins. You can get copies here. If, if you want a copy, we'll make you a copy here.
Yeah, uh, we're going to work on those forms for the registration form. We're going to approve those at one of the meetings and then we'll just get those in for, for July. So hopefully next meeting or two, uh, we work those according to what else everyone else has done. And, uh, we'll approve the form and registration form and go forward with that.
Do we need another hearing for an ordinance or did we satisfy that with our last?
Uh, that, you have to have it, have it, uh, at two or three meetings. We'll do this one, the next one. And, uh, that'll be the last, it's not really a hearing. Uh, anyone who has questions can come in for it. The 60 days, you have 44 days. An, a, a pellon has 44 days from the first meeting to file a petition to, uh, ask for, uh, to be reopened. I haven't heard any comment on this at all. Fortunately, most of, as mentioned, there's most of those things in this, we're already doing anyway. And we do pay to throw. For some towns, the biggest thing is the pay to throw because they don't do it now. We already do it, so it's, it's not, there's really not much of a big deal on it for us. It's pretty straightforward. Actually, our, our little operation is pretty advanced by the standards of this new agreement. So, um, we're in pretty good shape. But yeah, the, uh, the ad's been in, it's been posted, it's on the website. And, uh, the next meeting, we'll bring it up for the third time. And, uh, that's really it unless someone comes in and asks questions and we'll be set to go. Or if the petition's filed, we'll have to see. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item 17, capital equipment replacement schedule. Uh, this is something that Dave and I have been working on. David brought to our attention that, uh, we are, um, we have been financing our, kept our road crew equipment recently. I think that, uh, I believe the history is that, uh, a few years back, a few big pieces of equipment broke all at once. And, uh, we were in the middle of a recession and we didn't want to.
Capping the landfill. I think we're capping the landfill too. That's, that took a lot of money.
Yeah. And we were in a, a period of very low interest rates. And so rather than, uh, going to the town and asking for, uh, a big tax increase to pay for equipment that we needed to replace, we financed it. Not an unreasonable thing to do. Now, uh, in the next couple of years, we're going to see, uh, that financing end. We're coming out from under those, uh, debt payments. And it's, uh, time to start thinking about how we want to handle that going forward. And so Dave and I have been looking at a, at a few options for how to do that. Uh, one is to save for it. The other is to, to borrow for it. And it's, uh, it's not a slam dunk, uh, given that interest rates are so low right now. And, uh, as, as you'll see, I think the answer is to save for part of it. But, uh, here's our, our equipment inventory. And it shows the, uh, the year that we bought the item, uh, the expected life of that item. And I guess there could be some, some, uh, some debate there, but that's what Dave and I have come up with. At least how long we would like the stuff to live. And then the year that it would be replaced, uh, what it cost when we bought it and what we expect it to cost when we replace it. And what we've done is just assume that over the lifetime of that, it's going to, uh, inflate at 2% a year, uh, which has been a good number for the, the CPI for the last few years. And so.
I don't see the, uh, road foreman's truck on there.
Road foreman is the Dodge 5500.
I'm sorry.
I don't know why I made that.
No, okay. I'm sorry, yes.
The 2013 Dodge.
I think 12 years is too much, too long for a pickup truck.
Yeah, even the, even the one ton. The, the, you know, to be honest, the Dodge, I don't really anticipate, uh, having very long. I've already talked some about the need. The F-550, stretching that is, is going to be hard. But we're still paying for, for the Dodge. I didn't mean to get into this tonight, but as long as it's come up, might as well. The Dodge, the Dodge 5500, we're still making payments on it. I think there's two or three years more payments. It was purchased in, in coordination with the Volvo. If I can break that apart and we can use the Dodge 5500 as a trade-in to replace the F-550, we can carry the payments forward without increasing the payments and, and replace the truck we need, which is a functioning, uh, F-550 or equivalent vehicle, which will be good for plowing the streets. And that, that will shave some money off there.
You're talking eliminating one vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. And, and if there comes a period where we're, we're talking about needing to get one back, uh, we can look into that. The functionality, um, as was determined when it was purchased is one thing. Looking at it now and, and the economics of it, it seems worthwhile to trade in a truck that has value now, the 13 Dodge. And trade it while it has a good, good, good value to it and replace the truck that, that is hurting. The, the six Ford is hurting.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's, it's, it is hurting. Uh, and we can definitely pin it together for a couple of years. But, uh, again, if an opportunity is there, maybe it's time just to get the proper piece of equipment and, uh, do it. It's not, it's just a change of, uh, what you view the utility of the vehicle as being. Right now we have, uh, a more serious need for a proper one-ton than the Dodge. Dodge has a dump body, but converting it, I asked you, converting it to a proper dump body would be, you know, too much. The 12 years for the, for the bigger trucks, uh, again, it, it kind of depends on, and this is talking to other, other people. Some towns are, are getting more out of their trucks, uh, as they move away from the heavy amount of salt they've been using, uh, which we're trying to do. And if you're talking about pre-coating roads, maybe we can stretch these vehicles out. And especially when you get into, uh, you know, the single and tandems. The replacement cost of these is getting, you know, quite, quite high. I mean, you're looking at a tandem, the 13 tandem there, uh, just by doing a simple inflation rate, it's going to be $235,000 when it has to be replaced. You know, we're getting to some serious money and, and stretching the life by, uh, you know, even an aggressive maintenance program, uh, every year is, every year is, is money. You know, there's, there's two ways of looking at it. I agree, there's looking at keeping a truck, uh, like the last one, Steve, I think when we traded that in, we got $25,000 for the, you know, uh, it's kind of a marginal return. Could, could we have made that truck for, for a lesser amount of money last two more years? You know, possibly. It's, it's, it's an approach. These are estimates. Of course, you don't know. You could have the, uh, you know, the truck that just fails to function properly after nine, 10 years and it just has to go because you're just replacing too many things. And there, there are variables in this stuff.
10 years is.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the single axles too. Yeah.
If you want to keep them longer, you can have to, so you're blasting and painting and.
Yeah.
Because once you start to see the rust, the flakes coming off, it's.
And trucks who can play with the, the backhoe and the excavator, uh, I mean, these are two long-term vehicles and, and the hours on each of them now are, are pretty minimal. And they've been around a while. So I would, I would imagine with proper maintenance, both of these would even extend past that lifespan. Uh, the excavator has what, 400 some odd hours on it? And roughly, eh, 600? Okay, yeah, and it's been around.
That excavator, Dave, has been used 15 hours a month.
Yeah, so.
About $600 an hour it's costing us.
Yeah, and as a, as a heavy, you know, as a construction, a piece of equipment, I mean, really it could do, uh, 50 times that in the month and so we're going to be, we're going to have it.
Number one, it should be used more.
Yeah.
And number two, I think the lifespan of that can be more than 20 years.
Yeah, I do too, because it's just not getting the use that would really tear it up.
And it's not like you're out putting the thousand, $2,000 a year on. You know, on a regular construction job.
Yeah, we're into our, uh, third year with it, uh, second, two and a half years into it and we have 600 hours on it. So that's going to be around a while. The backhoe, of course, because you have the excavator, the backhoe's going out less.
Right.
So you have two pieces of equipment here that, uh, will probably extend out. The, the big issue is, uh, the grader used from, uh, almost year round. Cause it does have plowing capabilities too. You can put a wing on it and push back snow with it too. So 25 years is probably, uh, maxed on that too, I would think, Steve, if you think.
We have a wing on the equipment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's options to use that to, to push back snow and things. It's another vehicle you can put out there. The next big one really coming up, if we, if we work the Dodge into the Ford, would be the '09 single axle that, uh, is going, is going to need to go pretty soon.
All right, well, um, this is all good and needs to go into, uh, this discussion. What I've, uh, been looking at really is the finance questions. And once we, uh, kind of settle on the finance questions or even, even before that, we can go in and look at the specifics of, uh, how long we think we're going to get, uh, out of each of these pieces of equipment. But for, uh, for a first blush, uh, this is what, uh, what we came up with.
I'd like to look into the possibility, Tim, of, uh, maybe possibly cutting down one truck and one man in the winter time for plowing and just contract that out. Cause then, then you're down one employee and you're down on the equipment. And you need to bet in the winter time and you don't necessarily in the summer.
Yep. I think that should be looked at. It's a different question than what I'm.
Well, no, but I mean, it kind of goes everywhere we're talking about now.
I agree, I agree. It's something that we've been, been talking about lately.
Talking about that too.
I think Paul will hire trucks in the winter time for plowing.
Well, yeah, well, I don't want to go too far astray, but many towns across the state, and I was just up in Montpelier last week and, and there's towns talking about, um, contracting out instead of having, you know, uh, extra vehicles and things, contracting out. The money pretty much stays local anyway because you, you do a local bid and you wind up getting a local person with a truck who wants to do the plowing.
Right.
You know?
Um, I, I, I think that's a, a good point and a question that Dave and I have been talking about, one that we ought to explore. I will say that previous, uh, select boards have explored that question as well. I was talking to Lon McLean Talk recently and said, and, um, they considered that question, the, the balance between full-time crew and contract labor. And, uh, they did some polling of towns and, uh, some years back. And, uh, what they found is that towns that had moved toward contract labor were moving back toward full-time labor because of quality of service. That they didn't feel like they, they got, uh, the plows there when they needed them or the, the, the quality of the road construction that they needed, uh, when they hired it out. So, um.
More control.
More control. So, um, I think it's still a valid question to ask. And I've been, we've been asking it lately. I think we just need to explore it in depth. Uh, so here's the, the kind of the punchline of, of this is, um, if you, uh, if you, uh, you know, we've got $1.8 million worth of equipment that, that's the cost that it's going to be when we replace it in whatever year. If we, uh, save for reserves, uh, we save for that and we earn interest on that money at half a percent because that's what you can get now, maybe. That's not what we're getting now, but I'm being optimistic, saying we can get half a percent. We, you know, we are in $100,000 interest over 20 years, you know, spread out variously and it ends up saving us a little bit of money. I, I was surprised to find this. I went through this whole exercise using 5% for my rate of return. And then you save significant money, uh, relative to the actual cost over 20 years. But you can't get that. I talked to Stu Hurd in Bennington. They have all their reserve funds in one fund. That one fund earns .3% right now. Zero .3%. Less than inflation. And that's part of, uh, what goes into the, the finance question here is, uh, the question of, uh, putting large sums of money in the bank where they lose value relative to inflation. So, uh, and then we can, uh, balance that against the cost of not saving at all for, for the, for the stuff and just, uh, uh, finance it when it comes due. In that case, uh, you end up spending money on interest over that period of time. But over 20 years, um, $300,000 is not, uh, a huge amount of money. That's over 20 years. That's not per year. That's the total, total cost there. And even if, uh, you know, debt went up to 6%, uh, it still, you know, ends up being $2.1 million to buy, uh, $1.8 million worth of equipment over 20 years. So it's a, it's kind of a, almost becomes a philosophical question. And I guess kind of a predict the future kind of question. Now, are, are return on investment rates always going to be this low? And are, uh, debt service rates always going to be this low? So, uh, looking at each of these individually, this is if we just debt finance everything. And I've, for simplicity, assumed that we finance everything over five years. And these yellow bars indicate, uh, when, uh, stuff is due to, to reach end of life over the next 20 odd years. This goes out to 2035 here. That's just your first graph. That's just, uh, the vertical graph. The years. Yeah, the years, uh, the replace year is where those yellow bars pop up. Yep. And so, uh, this is the graph of what we're currently spending on debt. So we're, we're spending $200,000 per year on debt service right now. And those payments are going to go away in the next, uh, few years. And so if we, uh, take on new debt to finance that equipment, this is what that looks like. This red line, financing everything for, for five years. And then, uh, the purple line is the sum of those two. So, uh, we immediately, as soon as, uh, this current batch of, uh, stuff that we had to buy all at once comes out from under debt service, we start dropping down, drop down as low as, uh, uh, $21,000 here. But then if we don't smooth it out with any savings, what we're looking at is big fluctuations. You know, one year we go and say, we're heroes. We're only spending $21,000 in debt service. And then a few years later, the next select board has to borrow almost $200,000 to, uh, to buy that. So the, the real downside of debt finance is not the cost of debt. It's the fluctuations of when things break and you having to, uh, to finance it all at once.
For some, for some reason, people that I talk to in town just, just feel that the town shouldn't be in debt. It's a philosophical thing again, so...
Yeah, it, it is, it is kind of philosophical. I'm, I'm that way too. I have a friend that I have this argument with all the time, who has a thirty-year mortgage and I have a fifteen-year mortgage. And it's, it's, it's almost philosophical. It comes down to, you know, if you wanna do the numbers, what you get on your investment relative to what you get on your debt. And really, you're, you're not getting much on your investment now. So this is the other option. If we save it all, and this is where you, you take each piece of equipment, you see when it's going, gonna come due, and you calculate how much you've gotta save at point five return on investment. And then you add all those up. And that looks like this line here, which goes up fairly quickly. And then, you know, we've gotta start saving for, you know, this batch of, of stuff that's coming due here. And if you look at the total of debt service plus savings, to save for all of it, you're looking at maintaining two hundred thousand dollars a year, either in debt service or savings, for a number of years. That doesn't really start to come down until you get out to ten years from now. The other thing that's interesting is this, now this, this, you know, this is the green line.
Just to that.
This is the green line, which is the fund balance that we would acquire to do all this savings, to save it all. So this green line is on this green scale over here. So each year, we're putting in this amount of money into a reserve fund. This is the size of that reserve fund, okay? So it drops down, goes up to half a million, it drops down when we buy this batch of equipment. Then it builds up to, I'm sorry, not a half a million, yeah, half a million, well, nine hundred thousand here, over a million here in anticipation of two big pieces of equipment out here. And when I first looked at this, I thought, that's, that's too, too much. But I, if you think about it, the reserve fund's never gonna go to zero unless everything is bought in the same year. So you're always partway through saving for the pieces that are gonna break later on. So you've got a big reserve fund. Problem I have with that is we're putting a lot of money in the bank and watching it, earning half a percent interest on it and watching it lose value at the rate of two percent a year. And I'm not comfortable with that either. So what I came up with is kind of the Goldilocks option, a little bit of both, was just arbitrarily, I said, well, instead of putting what I actually calculated is what we need to save for everything, what if we just save for half of it? And that ends up being this line here, which is half of the reserve payments that we were doing before. The, the debt plus reserve drops down and stays down. So we'll, we'll go from spending two hundred thousand dollars a year on debt to, you know, a hundred and a quarter very quickly. And that works its way down to about a hundred in the out years. And then if you look at the reserve fund that you get doing that, that's the green line. And on this green scale over here, it never gets more than half a million dollars there, which, and it's pretty good. It doesn't go negative until you get out here into 2035. So it doesn't save all of it, but it, it does a good job. And you think about it, this is on the order of seventy-five thousand dollars here, where it goes negative in the year 2035. You know, if we've, if we've been saving regularly and in the year 2035, the select board has to borrow seventy-five thousand dollars to, to buy a piece of equipment, that's not a, not a terrible thing. And so that's where I'm kind of coming out in the end, is looking at this, is I think in terms of bringing the, the, the cost down on a per-year basis and saving for equipment in order to smooth out the fluctuations, something like, you know, you start out with, it's around fifty to seventy, whoops, fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars worth of saving. Over the long term, it's, it's around a hundred thousand dollars a year that we put into reserves to, to pay for that equipment.
But you're borrowing the other half.
No, no, this buys all the equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, this buys everything. It's, it's just that it doesn't cover the full cycle so that when you get out here, you've gone negative. So, you know, at some point in here, you know, you might have to reevaluate where you are when you're looking at this big batch of equipment here. But for, you know, ten or fifteen years, if we save around a hundred thousand dollars a year, and we can do that very easily as we come out from under these debt payments, our, our total after starting FY17 is gonna be coming down. So we'll be coming out ahead. And we maintain around a hundred thousand dollars a year for a number of years. We're, we're paying for equipment for a long time.
The other thing you might consider, Tim, when, before that Volvo was purchased, I checked with virtually every contractor in town that's got an excavator. We could've rented with an operator an excavator that would do anything that Volvo would do for a hundred dollars an hour. So you might wanna consider, you know, just like I say with the snowplowing.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda get the mix of different options in here. Because there's several contractors in town that you, you may not need a machine all the time. I mean, you're kind of stuck with the Volvo now because you've got the depreciation on it already.
Mm-hmm.
And with that machine, there's no reason that machine couldn't last a top thirty years.
Mm-hmm. And that's a good point. You know, maybe in the year 2035, when that machine breaks, we don't buy another one. And the, this savings is, is enough.
True.
But I think, you know, those kinds of questions are, are relevant to ask. And, you know, we should be looking at, you know, are we, are we spending our money in the right way? Like I was saying earlier, you know, if twenty years is how long a road base lasts, we need to be laying two and a half miles of road base every year. And we're not doing that. And, you know, maybe, maybe contracting it out is a way to do it. Maybe not.
Well, you could have a mix, just like you do it now, and maybe contract some of it out. And, you know, I don't know. I've never heard that number that it's twenty years that a road base will last. I mean, where's it gonna go? It's not gonna move anywhere. You, you're, what, what makes the effect on a road is traffic, erosion, all kinds of things. And how it was built, start with.
Yeah.
And, and it's like the White Creek Road, with the time they built that road and they turned it into a blacktop road. They never had a proper base under it. I mean, as everybody knows from last year with down by Broad Hills, it's all clay under there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I've, I've seen them digging out twenty feet of clay to put in a road.
I would like to believe that that twenty num, twenty-year number is conservative because there's...
I haven't, I haven't heard that.
There's variable, it comes from a study from V-Trans. V-Trans is responsible for maintaining access roads that are town roads that access certain state facilities. And it's a study by them on the replacement values for paving and gravel roads. So to a certain extent, twenty years for a moderately busy road to clearly much longer for, for roads that aren't used very often, you know, real secondary roads. But it, it was a study done that was going around the road foreman's listserv and on, for cost estimating. And this is what V-Trans came up with for how they fund towns for repairs to their access roads, that are town roads that access or, or the main approach to a state park or something. So it's kind of an interesting study. Of course, there are variables, like everything is variables on usage. But if you have a, you know, a, a class-three dirt road that's being used, you know, a frequent basis like some of ours are, it's, it's not that far off, I don't think. Paved roads, you know, Harvest Hill should last longer, although Harvest Hill is pretty much at the end. But, you know, if you have another paved road that's used frequently, you know, a maintenance and replacement cycle of twenty years is not, is not out of the question.
Steve, can I ask what the thought is on the old grader? Yeah. Is, is the mechanics of it, other than the engine, okay? Or is it all worn out?
Not, not at all. The transmission's working, it seems to. Keep up with the service a hundred years, don't find any, have no rust or abrasion in it, you know.
Is that a rough idea, how many hours is that, that engine?
I don't. Supposedly rebuilt somewhere around, I wanna say two thousand, maybe two thousand. It's around twelve thousand, around the machine right now.
Yeah.
So, so another engine rebuild is not without, is, would, what, what might be reasonable because the machine is not worn out?
Right.
Okay.
Are you even a new engine?
And, and Dave and I, when we did, started putting this together, we were the opinion that when that grader breaks, we're not planning to replace it.
Yes, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, you just have one grader and it just runs. You just run it all the time. And it's convenient to have two at this time of year, but the cost value of, of hiring a local contractor or getting one more.
Well, we always run it by, by Deans in the past, too.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
It wasn't all-wheel drive, but still.
Yeah, there were ways around it.
True. So just in terms of economics and philosophy and those kinds of questions, the, the debt only is subject to fluctuations in terms of the, what we have to go to the, the vote is for in taxes as needs to purchase equipment come and go. And it's also subject to possible interest rate rises in the future, although as I showed there, even if it went to six percent, it's not, it's not a backbreaker over the long haul. Reserve funds is philosophically, a lot of us feel is the way we ought to do it. But as I was showing, we would have to maintain the two hundred thousand dollars a year toward the road equipment that we're currently putting into debt finance into savings for quite a while before that would drop off. And we, we end up creating large reserves that are, are losing money in terms of inflation. And that just doesn't seem, seem right either. But this, something in between where we save somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars a year is sufficient to fund our equipment purchases for a good twenty years. And, you know, worst case is, you know, in the year 2035, when the grader and the excavator reach end of life, we have to borrow a little bit to, to finance that. Or we, you know, somewhere in the, you know, 2020, as we, we look at where we are relative to, you know, how we're doing things, maybe we're, you know, decide we don't replace the excavators Ken's suggesting and just rent it.
Okay.
I like number three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The Goldilocks solution. It's just right.
I like that name.
Little, little of that, little of this.
Yeah, makes sense.
Questions, comments?
Good job. Good job. It's pretty self-explanatory.
How, are we limited to where we can deposit reserve funds?
I was asking VLCT about that. And I didn't get an answer that said we, we have to invest in zero-risk investments. But I was told that I was discouraged from thinking about that very hard. And I don't find anybody that's doing that. I think, you know, when you're, when you're using public money...
Yeah.
You know, if you put it in the stock market and the stock market is down the same year you had to buy an excavator, you're gonna look stupid.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking stock market, I was thinking of something.
But...
Even law, yeah. Even bonds have fluctuation rates, you know, a higher-yield bond, a muni or something like that, it all has, has risk factors that again are discouraged for public tax funds. And this is the other portion, part of having the money in these funds more accessible than if it was tied up in a long-term bond. If, if, you know, the grader wheels popped off and we needed a new one, we'd need money, not taking a huge penalty from taking it out of a five-year note or something like that. So we are kind of restricted in a lot of ways what we do about it. The good part about this and having a hundred thousand though a year is that this isn't new money. This is the debt that we're no longer paying, being put to work for us instead of paying out.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, I was looking at even treasury bonds. You've gotta hold them for thirty years to get three percent now.
Yeah.
Hopefully the interest will change a little bit because it is kind of preposterous now. The interest is below, I mean, you know, it's...
It's essentially zero.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's amazing. Hopefully that'll change at some point during this.
It's low now.
All right, Tony, you were gonna report back on our question that we brought up before about the community appropriations. We were asking just in terms of the unwieldiness of the, the number of appropriations on the ballot and the, the sixty thousand dollars a year that we're, are spending on it. Not that it's not money well spent, but should we re-ask the people, you know, do they want it bad enough to get a petition to get back on the ballot? And you brought up a point that they might have, they might be depending on our money to help them get other money. And you were gonna relook into that.
Well, I, I contacted all of them. What I have found out, and I apologize, I don't have my folder with me, was that I was right as far as for most of them, their federal money and their state money is contingent on a local buy-in contribution. For many of the organizations, those are assessments based on use by Shasbury residents. And they, they quoted the number of people in Shasbury that access their services. And it was, and for most of them, it was a very small percentage of the total cost per person who accesses those services. Coincidentally, today in the Rutland Herald, Castleton is grappling with the same question. They require a yearly five perc, a five percent of the tax, of the voters' petition for everyone they put on the ballot. The agencies are coming back saying this is very difficult and time-consuming and that, you know, it just doesn't work. And we'd like to do it another way. Give us three years. If we're three years on the ballot, then it's an automatic thing. When I reviewed the form, and I apologize, I have not talked with Bob Holmes about it, when I reviewed the document, it's, it's a pretty comprehensive document that is required by every agency. I, my recommendation is keep it the way it is, have them yearly apply, and let the voters know, particularly when we've changed the, the way we're doing the town meeting, the annual meeting, is let them know that every agency they vote for adds to the bottom line of the yearly budget. And I know it's cumbersome to vote for all eighteen, but I think it's a democratic, it's a democratic process. You know, people can in fact, they can choose what they vote for. So, I mean, I can go back and I have one other phone call I gotta make too, because that person's no longer with the agency. But by and large, I found that their explanations, and everybody was great as far as explanations were concerned. They, you know, it was a thought, every one of them seemed to me to be a thoughtful process that they went through in order to ask for the money from the town.
Any other comments? Well, my inclination is to agree with Tony. I, I thought this was worth asking and I wanted to make sure that this was not becoming just an automatic thing for people. I know that I, I'd overheard a number of voters in the polls saying things like, just vote for all of them, you know, don't, don't question that. But as you were pointing out, you know, the vote was not constant on all those. And last year, for whatever reason, the voters decided not to support a couple of them. So there, it does appear that the voters are giving thought to it as well. So we'll, we'll stick to the same process.
Do you want your box back? But I have a file folder, a bigger file folder.
You gotta return the box.
You want the box.
Came with the building.
Yeah. It's got this very sad-looking box. Yeah.
It came with the desk.
It came with the desk. I have to have it back. Is there any other business?
Do you have bids on, did you say you had another bid for?
Paint it.
Harvest Hills?
Oh, oh, yeah, we had, we had gotten an estimate from Peckham on Harvest Hills.
And I have an estimate from Bowdoin's.
Oh, okay, yeah. I mean, I don't know where that's gonna go until we, we start setting our priorities. Because I have, that's Buck Hill. Yeah, I mean, we did a estimate for, just out of curiosity, if we could get to this, for 780 feet, 20 feet wide.
We probably don't want to say any of these estimates out loud.
No, we're not gonna say anything out loud, but we do, we do have one. And that all has to do with when we get back into what we're actually gonna do this year. These state grants that we've talked about before that, that we put in for, let's see where we go with those first off. And then when the crew and, and all of us decide what we're gonna do with our 2100 feet of fabric, we may have enough to do some paving, but paving is so expensive. We really gotta put more money into it. Even changing, like, we have a paving reserve fund, which is really a road resurfacing fund. Because the roads, we only use it for class two matching, but some of our class two roads, like Airport, are, are dirt roads. So we're resurfacing, you know, it's, it's a resurfacing grant or fund. So, you know, let's see what the state says. The state doesn't have a budget yet. Keep your fingers crossed that, you know, we, we at least get the 175.
Would these be considered, would this be considered a bid?
No, we have, no, that's, that's just an estimate that we can work on to give us an idea of what we need to do. So I have one, because we got, I got one from Peckham's and, and you have one from Bowdoin's. And, you know, these are not bids. These are just ballpark so we, we can think, I mean.
You would have to go out to a formal bid.
Oh, no, they'll have to go out to a formal, believe me. Yeah, they'll just have to go out to a formal bid.
What have you got for ourselves? What, what, what do you figure that doing down there?
Uh, the one I had was for reclaiming chloride and a base and a top coat.
Did anybody check a person I just resealed in that and stole it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we're just, these are just thoughts. Laura had asked me about this earlier. I said, yeah, when we were doing the big projects, you know, we asked about that too, just to get some money.
I mean, I'm just thinking that that would get you through a couple, three years, whatever, till you could pave it.
Yeah, as I said, when we get to, when we get to see how much money we're actually getting from the state, we can get into what we're gonna do from here.
Oh, that's a good base.
The road is not breaking.
We don't have a lot of money.
No, it's dried out.
When we get down a little bit, we can see what we can do.
Really?
It's only about that thick. What, what's down underneath is, is the chloride and the, and the what's ground.
Yeah, because I mean, I built the road up, but they paved it after I got done for the town.
What's coming off is just didn't.
Well, as far as I know, that's only been paved once since the 70s.
That's right, yep.
That's beyond that 20-year line I was talking about.
Well, there you go. They last longer than that. Case closed. Okay, I didn't really note any action items. I think, looking back over the agenda, we need to, we ought to be getting close to closing on the North Road property, I would think.
The, the funding is gonna be Monday. I, I have not, other than the funding, I haven't looked into the, the North Road. I don't know where the estate is.
Communicate with the attorneys and see where we are on that.
Yeah, I mean, Ray stops in and asks where we are and I just tell him the money's coming.
Yeah, but we got the financing taken care of now. And so that was the, the first big hurdle, so.
Yeah.
I think once that's done, it's a matter of just shuffling the paperwork deck and going to closing.
Yeah, I mean, we're not doing anything with the house, so it's not a question of an inspection or anything.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward. The only thing that we might want to check is the septic, just as a matter of precaution.
Well, we, we.
Let's not go there.
We missed our deadlines for inspections on that. We assumed that we weren't gonna do any inspections, so.
No, it's never gonna be developed or anything, so it's just.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're worried. If, you know, if there's something wrong with the septic, we're not gonna do anything about it.
We're gonna fix it anyway, so, yeah, it's true.
All right, I move we adjourn. Second, all in favor?